Call the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for December 3rd, 2020. Two selectmen are present, one is absent for this evening. This is Mr. Dave Knoll. Town administrator is present, according for the town, Dunbar and the residents, Mr. Leo Martell. Good evening, Leo.
Hello.
Okay. It's gonna be a relatively quick meeting, we got a few agendas, a few budgets to go through tonight, and a couple of deposits to take, and a few discussions on employment. Okay, while we have a motion on the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 19th.
Now, second that? Any discussion, Bob?
Not really.
Except that?
Other than I forgot to add.
Okay, here you go.
Thank you. For the record, uh... For the record, the email was having a hiccup due to Microsoft update, and we got those minutes late, so I didn't scrutinize them as much as I could have, but my first blush, they were okay.
There we go.
Okay. You gonna open up for public comment?
No, not this week.
Okay, back row?
Awesome, good.
You gentlemen on the agenda, okay. I'll close public comments, bring them back to the board, and I sergeant, Bernard. You have the floor, come on up. We have the hot seat right here.
Good.
Don't worry, we can shoot the messenger.
Um, I didn't promise though.
That's all right. I'm ready.
Okay.
It's a relatively bland budget, in the sense that the only increases that we have is related to the 1% CPI, an increase to step two for Officer Brian Tyler, and 53 pay weeks. So you'll see on the front page of the budget proposal, the total personnel increase is $10,280 for those aforementioned items. Contractual increases, prosecution went up $170, dispatch went up $819, and then IMC, which is our records management system, went up $325. So the total amount for our contractual increases is about $1,300. So we did not increase any of our discretionary lines, vehicle maintenance, training, equipment supplies, uniforms, things of that nature. So the total proposed increase is $11,594, which is about 2.38% over this year's allotted budget. Again, we wanted to keep it physically responsible, you know, things have been tough with COVID, and the personnel increases again are related to the step two, the 1%, and then the 53 pay weeks.
Okay. Yep. Is Chief's car gonna last another year?
Yeah, it should. That's expected.
Yeah.
Gonna give it a little more tape to bond over.
Okay.
So you'll see throughout the budget proposal, obviously we break down each individual line, give a brief description, and explain, you know, what the increase is attributed to, if applicable. If there's any questions about particular lines, we're gonna address them.
There was a move in, a move to use Goffstown for some, tell me about Goffstown, we're getting to a communication arrangement.
Oh, as a, um, as a network hosting, there's been some talk about that, we haven't heard anything from them, you know, with any numbers or anything, so we'll plan, you know, plan on going with the current CCS certified computers, and if something changes, we'll.
And that software is, it's got a finite ending, I understand, coming?
Oh, yeah, that... They're not gonna make any major upgrades to it now, just going forward, it'll be all very minor and.
Okay, maintenance.
At some point, Goffstown is gonna, is, will do an upgrade, and we'll probably upgrade along with them, and whatever most of the rest of the state goes with.
Okay. And I only, the only reason I'm aware of that is your chief.
Yeah, absolutely.
One point.
Yeah.
And I know that was a pending, potential pending expense. Bob, do you have any questions?
No.
No. And one last thing. Have you reviewed the governor's recommendations for police changes for the upcoming year? In other words, I think some of the changes, whether it be like mandatory wearing of the, of the video recorders, cameras, like are we gonna need more, or anything like that, have you thought of anything about that in that line for equipment changes?
We, we actually went through that list, I said we, I said Chris, went through the, the lawless governance list there, and we weren't compliant with most of that stuff already.
Okay, excellent. I just wanna make sure that you're being proactive and looking at that too. We are, and I mean, we've been wearing body cameras for four years now.
Right.
There will come a time when we'll seek to upgrade that technology, however, if the state mandates that, they're gonna have to fund it, so there may be some grant funding opportunities that wouldn't impact the local taxpayer.
I think we have a sergeant in the department who's very good at grants.
I'm keeping my eye out, keeping my eye out, certainly. But yeah, as she said, when the, when those recommendations came out, there were about 48 of them, and a lot of them didn't apply to us directly. Some of them had to do with the licensing authority for police, which is police standards and training.
Okay.
Others had to do only with state enforcement agencies, but with that being said, you know, I think the department as a whole has been very proactive with a lot of these things, because we read through that list, and we're already doing most of those things. The things that we weren't already doing, we're in the process of completing now, so I think we're in pretty good shape.
And one last question for me. Part timers, are we losing any this year? Any protective losses?
No anticipated losses.
Okay. Because there was a gentleman committed quite far, as I recall. He was out of the area at one point, one of your part timers. Trying to think. Okay, maybe, the only thing is, I would, why this even services? Why does services?
What about, what about back times was what did the sheriff kill for county? That's what you mean.
Okay.
But.
No, but I saw, I saw like a, MUR did an exposé on police recruitment. Manchester's hurting, Nashville's hurting a little bit. The thing is, uh, it may be a, maybe a challenge if you're looking for replacement down the road. That's what I'm gonna, nothing in this page this year.
We're very aware that recruitment is a real problem, and some of the larger agencies are drawing away, you know, full-time people that are academy-trained and experienced, they're drawing away a lot of the rest, the best candidates, because they, they can pay more for it.
Exactly. Okay. All right, but they don't have the work conditions of Dunbar. Okay, Bob, I have no other questions.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, we'll probably have to call you back if we get questions as we go through it with a fine-tooth comb now.
Yes, absolutely.
When you look going through it with a fine-tooth comb, you're gonna notice that the detective position is still in the budget funded as it was last year.
Mm-hmm.
There's a couple of things that, that we could do with that. We wanna keep that there as, as we approached the, after the town meeting, we may come to you and speak to you about using that money to try and hire another full-time person in advance of my departure, so that there'll be a trained person here.
Ready to assume.
Yeah, so we'll be up to, we'll be up to staff, at least.
Who said you could leave?
My wife.
Gotta listen to her.
Yeah.
Okay, no, so noted.
Yeah, so that's what it's there for, we just kind of left it because it was already there.
Okay.
But that's our, that's our intention. I know I had told you a couple of times that I was planning on a warrant article this year to add additional position to the police department, and I think in light of all that's going on, we decided that the most prudent thing to do is to put that on the back burner and save it for another day, and just.
I like the idea of being proactive, but in timing is key too. And with the, with the shortages, you can't be, the lead time is gonna be critical, I think, also.
We're gonna need to start advertising right after town meet. Once the budget gets passed, we're gonna need to stop going right away, because we'll have to beat the deadline for an August academy.
Right, right, to get them in there.
Yes.
We'll have about, from the time, you know, after town meeting, generally the paperwork for the August academy is due in July, so from the point of advertising to hiring, we're looking at four months, which is a tremendous challenge and not a lot of time. It can be done, but that's kind of the timetable that we're gonna be looking at. And like the chief said, the idea is to have someone trained to slide in.
Right.
And just go to the tires.
Okay, I'm all set.
How about warrant articles? Last year we established a $1,000 CRF deposit. I would assume that you would hope that we were going to continue that?
Well, I think I, I kinda need to replace the Taurus. Because I don't know that I'll get another inspection out of it, it's.
I would concur with that.
It's an O8, and it's, it's rough.
Okay, so.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have a warrant article for a replacement vehicle for the radio next year.
Not 2021, or?
Oh, it'll be 20, 2021. The idea is to purchase the vehicle and put it to service probably in December, so it'll be late in the year. I'll continue to drive the Taurus as long as I can.
So you're asking for another vehicle, is that?
I'm gonna ask for another vehicle.
Okay, because what I was getting at is we started a capital reserve.
Yeah, I know we did.
For a thousand, so I needed to know, are we gonna be putting money into that, or are we?
In addition. I don't, I didn't plan on putting money in addition to, to the vehicle.
Okay, so you're gonna be asking for a vehicle?
We're gonna be asking for a vehicle, we'll see what we have in the, in the vehicle maintenance fund there, and we'll pay for, you know, as much we can out of that.
That's the one that's partially funded with some of the dollars we get on detail.
Oh, yeah, those detailed cars are hard at work, making money for stuff, for these replacements.
Just to give the board kind of an idea and lean as well, I've been working on getting quotes and, you know, the outfit costs for the equipment and everything, and it's probably gonna be in the ballpark as, the same as last year.
Okay.
So just, just to give you a monetary idea of what we're looking at.
Do we have to get a Ford again?
It's kinda, yeah, yeah, they've, they've gone, they've gone well by us.
Oh, but the thing is, I was just remembering some of the, I said that in jest a little bit because of the challenges that we had early on with the, I want somebody to get the bug's worked out of it.
Yeah, it, it seems to have, we, those, um, police interceptors are a little wary about all the electronics in there, but, you know, our oldest one we put into service in 2012, you know, it's still going strong, it's got, what, 130, 140,000 miles?
144.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, that was a little bit of jest.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm all set, again, any last items, Lean?
No, good, I'm glad, we just kind of got that on the table, I just want to be prepared.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be quick, and I don't want to forget anything.
We need to replace that vehicle is pretty much done.
Right.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Hey, John.
Hello.
Don't get too comfortable, come on up. You got a sidekick guy in the stand too?
Yes.
Yeah, I got one over here, Don.
Yep.
You just keep your social distancing, that's all I ask. Hey, John, I heard you, I saw you expended almost your entire budget this year, so.
It could roll back.
That's where I went.
We didn't spend it.
I know. So, uh, talk to me.
Okay, um, we are looking at, at a level, I think, bu- budget, and, um, we, we'll either de-pending on what is going on later in the spring or summer and whatnot, either have a, a standard old, old home day, or we'd, uh, uh, either way, like, like, like to have an event or activities for the community, you know, to bring, bring people together.
Okay.
Which they sort of missed, you know.
You know, timing, I think, is gonna be critical this year, and I think the fact we have a home day in, uh, late August or September, it may, we, we may be past this, the COVID.
Oh, I don't know that.
We don't know that yet, and the thing is, but the thing is, I like to be optimistic.
Yes.
And I think having a dedicated town activity would be fantastic, if we are in the clear, as you might say. Bob, any comment?
No, no. These won't till we start doing these anyways, but I, I don't see, I don't see a problem. Hopefully.
And if things get, if the situation moves like it, we cannot have a mass gathering, you know, type event, we'd look at doing some other form.
Okay. The thing is, I'm open to thoughts out of the box, but the thing is, we're gonna cross that, the budget appropriately, and thinking out of the box as we approach next year, that's fine. Okay, Don?
Well, I think that what we wanna do with this year's budget is at least book some bands, some of the top bands in that four old home day in anticipation for it, and I don't know if August or September's gonna be the best time, but pick a date and, you know.
Well, the thing is, what I recommend is, we got a budget line, and I think it's, more than likely, we're, I think it's, I'm about 99% certain we're gonna recommend to fund it like last year. I think is, you're gonna have to just wait, do some research on the bands, and make some research on the dates, and come back to the board with some proposed dates, probably after the first of the year, and then we can pencil them in. But I think that's your job to do, come back to us.
Right, and, and by, by the first of the year, I'm not sure we will know for, for, for reasonably sure whether or what type of.
Oh, yeah, what type of venue you're gonna have, and so, the thing is, um, we'll, we'll, I think the selectmen will, I'm gonna speak on behalf of all the selectmen, I think we're gonna make sure we have some dollars budgeted and put aside for that, and I would be looking forward to that as a very positive thing for the community.
Yeah, and, uh, last year our budget was, what, was 5,700 plus there, but there was also 300 listed for, for Memorial Day, which I think is a separate item.
Correct, yeah.
But it showed up in, in, in the same chunk.
Yeah, that's the way it's set up in the system.
Okay.
So your old home day budget right now is 5,700, and we prepay for the Memorial Day band.
Okay.
Out of that next line that's in that category.
Right, and, and, and like, like, like you had, had mentioned in your e- e- e-mail, one of them, that if we book, book bands, put in the contract, that is considered upon.
Right, I think that's a prudent move.
Yeah. That and whatever.
No, if there's a mandate, if there's a move, still at the level the governor puts out that he doesn't want gatherings, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna be complying with the state.
Totally, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I've got, Bob, do you have any questions?
Only that the, you know, when you're looking at setting up and looking at the funding for the band, that's, band says it's coming out of next year's proposed budget, not this year.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, this year's budget is turning off, I believe.
Right.
Yeah, this one's coming back. And then for the record, the first three lines, you guys authorized some Christmas lights, so that has not been taken out of this budget, so that will go into the system of the year.
And by the way, just for the record, the lights this year, I mean, I drove up today, I thought the comment was very nice.
Yes, yes. And the, the, the lights are not part of the old home day budget, right?
Correct, there's $400 above it that we're tapping into.
That, that, all right. We just need a double check.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm all set.
Any other issues?
No, I, I think we're good, I think it was pretty easy, but I think is, we just gotta wait for the tincture of time to see what happens over time.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. And Don, I understand you're working diligently on working cemetery issues.
Yes.
Okay. Will you follow the hearing back from you?
Yeah, I'll be there next week.
Excellent, okay, thank, looking forward to it.
And I'll have, you know, see, I'll have more visuals.
Good. Okay.
Good evening, David.
Thank you.
Did you do the IRS?
We'll do that next.
Oh, okay.
Bob, you wanna make a motion on that one?
No, no.
Sit back.
Yeah, motion to approve for our 3195-B, 100003-B, accept the 2, 2204 dollars from the fundraising for the rates across Dunbar.
I second that, Lean, do you have the?
We do, over and over, we do.
Yeah.
We counted and, and double counted somewhere over.
And we keep it separate by days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Don, the only thing I ask, Lean brought it up, he says, you're, you're a gem at getting donations. But things with, in this time of COVID, in time of budget, Lean asked if we could consolidate your donations instead of two times a day, or two, three times a week, one time a week.
Yeah, I was gonna approach you on that. I think it would work best for all of us if maybe you came in on.
Yeah, I'll just pick up the checks and.
Lean, Lean.
And all in at once.
Lean was bragging about you, how you were saying you came in with one check, and then the mail comes, you got another check, and then another check. I mean, they don't never stop. But the thing is, uh, Lean was stuck collecting taxes today, and I couldn't, I, I had my time just trying to get five, two minutes with her.
On the phone.
Well, you gotta, you know, talk to me, I can get you a few more minutes.
Okay. I gotta pay my dues at it that way. I just throw that as a, as a constructive.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. All right, I looked at it. I'd like to continue this, a discussion that we had earlier.
The check that you had that I didn't have.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you a copy here too. Uh, if you recall, last meeting, Dave, Jim asked me to work out some wording for the COVID, non-first responder COVID hazards stipend, and I, and I such, I, I put together essentially a motion and some particulars which discuss it, and I identified people by name who would be receiving it. So I'm gonna open up, as you read this, I'm gonna open up for general discussion among the town administrator and the, and the board of selectmen.
Well, you, you need a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion.
A second, and then.
Yeah, okay.
Get over a discussion.
Then, uh, I'm gonna start with a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we initiate a non-first responder COVID hazard stipend. To be eligible, a person must either be a current full-time, part-time, or on-call town employee who has performed regular scheduled work hours during this COVID pandemic. Payment will be made December 2020 for those employees over record on November 30th, 2020. This payment will be taxable. The amount will be an amount of $1,000 for full-time employees and 500 to part-time slash on-call employees. This is a one-time hazard pay stipend to be paid, to be paid from funds not from local taxes, but funds from the CRF municipal aid grant.
And a secondary motion.
It's a long promotion, but most of the words are in there. And I'm gonna open up for discussion now. Now, there were some points of contention I'm gonna point out. That, I'm gonna start with the transfer station. I have a manager here, so one of them directly affects him. He did get a stipend, but he, he got it, nothing related to his current job, and this stipend is for his current job. He also brought up about a, he also, I also added a name on there, another name on there. It's been a, he's an on-call employee who's had some regular hours during the year. It was recommended by, uh, transfer station manager last week, I added him there. I also, in, in this list, I've also added a few of the elected officials who have been working for, in my opinion, front, frontline on the, on the, on the, taking care of our town employee, taking care of our town residents. I have excluded the selectmen. And I'm gonna open up for any discussion. Bob?
Actually, it's, uh, it's a, it's a good proposal, it's what we tried to find between two opposing lines.
Right.
Uh, and I will say that we're one of the only towns doing it. So I think it's, I don't think it's a bad thing, because I think, you know, people have to, had to put up with somewhat. We've had some people that have been resilient to wanting to come in versus wanting to mail things in, to make it easier for everybody in the office, and, and, you know, you are in direct contact, so, uh, I, I think it's a fair analogy from what we look at.
Town administrator, will allow you to comment?
Well, I think it's a generous stipend for your part timers as their contribution and their availability ranges for, from nine hours to 25 hours. I personally think that your full-timers have been over and above in the additional workload that they've had to take on, so the proportionate of the part timer to the full-time, I don't think is equally fair. I, but on the other hand, I'm generous, I'm grateful for the generosity of the board, and again, it's, you know, not everything that, something that every town or municipality is doing for their employees, so.
You know, I recognize that many times the state put out the availability funds for our first responders, and I think that was fantastic. I was on the website, and someone was asking those questions, you know, those frequently asked questions, will, will they extend to other, other type town employees? To be determined, to be announced later. And so they just, like, in my opinion, they blew off all the other employees, and didn't really acknowledge them, and, you know, my heart goes out to first responders, but the thing is, I have a gentleman sitting right there, and his crew sees almost every town family resident comes through his off, through his, his facility on a weekly basis. I have the town clerk who has to, has received taxes. I have you who have to interact with, with public, and that's why I'm pushing something. It is not as much as what the police department gets, it's not as much as what the first responder, the first responders got. I acknowledge, yeah, but it is, it is something coming from us rather than just taking all that COVID money, and we're splitting some. Majority is gonna go back to our taxpayers, but a small amount's gonna take, kind of like, start, give a stipend to those people who've kept this town operational in a safe manner, and that's all I'm gonna leave it.
And, and you have to remember that this is, the part-time employees don't receive much of anything, and especially at a transfer station, after we're dumping all that material or handling all the material, whether they are wearing the gloves or not, sometimes you forget, and sometimes you forget about your mask, and so they are in that situation, and to be real honest, I'm looking at a fairness thing, and it's, you can't start separating it by hours, you have to start separating it by categories. There's category of a full-time employee, category of a part-time employee. What may seem generous, uh, and, and, you know, I guess, I said this to Mike because we were talking about how we were gonna arrive at things, and I look at it as if the employee isn't happy, and if the resident isn't happy with what's happening with their money, chances are we met in the middle, that both people aren't happy, but both people are getting something out of it, so, uh, you know, I, I don't know. I think we're doing the, the right thing for everybody, and we're trying to say, I know nine hours may not seem like a lot, but they were there when they were needed, you know, and, and you could turn that off if you want, so if someone doesn't want to respond, or you can keep that, you know, communication open, you know, and. So I just think it's a fair way of deciding which way they get.
And before I take a vote, I'm gonna open up to the public if there's any comments. If not, you're in.
I have no idea what the numbers are, so I guess I don't comment. I do say that.
I have the program total, the total amount of money.
Okay, but, I mean, I don't know how it's broken down or anything, but I do have one comment.
Sure.
Is that, uh, also the people at the, at the transfer station have had to butt, had, deal with people butting heads and everything, a lot of short tempers, a lot of short fuses. The police actually got involved a few times, so, you know, I, I've been there where there was things going on, and it's, you know, they gotta sit there and deal with this, you know, so, I think it's fair if you pay, give them a decent amount too.
Well, I have just one comment, would be, man, I can respect that you guys not taking, you know, paying or getting a stipend yourself. However, I think you need to remember that you, the board of selectmen was also in the mix with us, you know, whether it be elections, or they be in the office. You know, even if, you know, I just think the board, as a taxpayer, I'm not talking as an employee, as a taxpayer, because I have to separate that. I just think that the board should give them, so they should get something, because they were there, you were there, you're all right there with us, you know what I'm saying?
They shouldn't exclude yourself.
Okay.
You know, I, I'll respond to that, though. I think it's, and, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think it's a conflict of interest so that we can do the right thing for both the employee and the taxpayer, that we take a position of looking at it and trying to settle this, so both sides are happy, and I, I'd rather not be involved in getting, because then you got someone that's saying, well, yeah, see, they're getting theirs too. well, yeah, see, they're getting theirs, too. It's just like when Congress gives themselves a raise, but refuses to adjust the minimum wage.
No, I see the whole sound, I just, I just think it should be out there, so now it's on the record that, you know, you guys, that, me as a taxpayer, I feel, you know, you guys are right there with us.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but the thing is, this was never about the money for me.
No, no.
And I, I thank you for the kind comments.
Yeah.
But again, there's gonna be people out there, my fellow citizens are gonna criticize me for doing it, and some are gonna be grateful, some are gonna criticize, and no one can look at me, and I can go to sleep at night, no one can look at me and say, well, I gave myself some money.
Right.
Can I also state for the record that the money that you're discussing right here today, in case they missed the previous discussion two weeks ago, is grant money that was unanticipated money, and the selectmen have the authority to do as they see fit with that money, whether put it into the surplus, whether apply it back to the taxes, or expend it on a necessary vehicle, equipment, or any of those sorts, so you're doing a.
As a follow-up on that, Lean asked about percentages, about 20%, just for the record, for the record, 80% is going back to the taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, all I said was, I don't know what the numbers are, and it's hard to, you know, come up with critique or anything, but I do know that these guys at the transfer station do put up with a lot of garbage, okay? So, you know.
So, so notice.
And then, you know, the other thing about you guys getting it is, but you have a lot of other people who volunteer on the board, different boards and committees, so what do you get as, you know, and they deal with people and stuff, so, you know, it's gotta be aligned somewheres, you know? Not that I don't want you to get it, my point is, you can keep spreading that out.
Understood. Okay, motions on the table? All in favor?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
All right, motion, so it passes. So Lean, you have enough information, you can give a copy to our recording. Okay. I'm gonna go through the mailbox items now. Okay, the last item I just wanted to, Bob, I'm gonna put this in the box. We have a county of Murmuran, we've got a, their budget went up around 2.95%.
Yeah, I read it this afternoon.
Hoping you didn't fall asleep, it looks boring.
That's for their proposed budget for next year.
Yeah, so that's going up about 3%. So I'm gonna leave that in the inbox for Dave, so he can take a gander at that. Okay, we have, tell me what this legislation is about, Lean.
That was a pass to assist municipalities in how they, allowing them some flexibility with how they wanna handle their annual town meeting.
Right, okay.
School meeting.
I stand corrected.
So that came from the school board.
We have the school board package.
And they would like, they're going to be requesting a joint meeting of the selectmen, the school board, and the moderator to discuss possibilities of.
A virtual meeting.
Virtual meetings.
Lean was already, I directed in, provided a date back to them, their first date proposal was on a Wednesday night, and that would preclude one selectman from attending.
Correct.
So she offered a counter date of December 21st, and as far as I know, 6:00 PM.
It's a one, it's a Monday.
Monday, December 21st, Bob, is that permissible with you?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we go with the December 21st, we'll get back to the school board, and we'll talk about that.
Yep.
Just for the public's information, talk about school board possibly being like a virtual meeting, where you can sit at home, attend a school board meeting, and like zoom in. Might be challenging from a logistical standpoint with that much bandwidth out there, so I'm not sure how that might go over. I know for the school board, in my opinion, they could, there's enough, there's not, there's never a full house at the school board meeting.
Right.
You could really space people at the school board meeting, if using that capacity of the gymnasium fully. Might be a little more challenging for a town meeting if we have something contentious. But this year, I'm not, I don't see anything contentious, so I think that'll be on the table for discussion, too. Bob, any comments?
Well, you know, I don't, I mean, being involved with a committee in the state that use virtual meetings when they get large, it's been problematic. And even a school meeting has enough people there that it could be problematic trying to come into a meeting, you know, to pay attention to a meeting that way, and.
You mean on a Zoom?
Yeah, on a Zoom, and then, I don't know, but, you know, drive-by voting, I think, you know, when you're reading that thing, and they allow for drive-by voting, and putting the warrant articles out there. Unless those people are at a, at a meeting, even a virtual meeting, and you may not get full attendance, or you may get people that can't get in to the meeting, and so they're gonna have no idea what that warrant article means, they're not gonna know what the impact is for the town, and so chances are, if, you know, a lot of them decide they wanna keep the taxes down, that before you know it, something that we may need gets voted down.
Yep, so as far as that meeting date, I'm still unclear if it's going to be a Zoom meeting that you guys are gonna discuss this with.
Okay.
Have you attended a Zoom meeting before?
Yeah, yeah.
What's going?
Yeah, I'm under political advisory council now.
Does it?
All year, we've gone to Zoom meetings, and, you know, towards the end of a meeting, you've got somebody that all of a sudden is talking, and so they wanna know who it is, because they weren't announced in the beginning.
Ah.
And then, of course, in our situation, we have to identify who's in the room with us, you know? So it makes it difficult, because they hear this person talking, and they announce, well, you're not, you didn't call, you didn't come in, or I couldn't get in at first, you know? And then all of a sudden, you're losing people that were in the meeting, and all of a sudden, they're trying to get back into the meeting, so.
So I know Dave's attended Zoom meetings for you, you wouldn't have a problem participating in this discussion?
This particular meeting, no, for this short, small group, I think this would be maybe 30 people at most.
Okay, so I can let the school board know if they're gonna coordinate this?
Just give the contact information.
We can have the invitation sent through them for a Zoom meeting.
All right, very good. Any other, that's a work in progress.
The other thing, though, is I'd like to find, I thought they gave the moderator the ability to move the meetings, not the elections now, to move the meetings, and I don't know if it would be better to move the meeting, you know, if we can see an end to this.
Right, that's what that law said, that there is a, the authority on the local level to be able to move it as far as September.
Right.
Which would be.
We'd have a, almost like a continuing resolution just to maintain a level budget.
Yeah.
You know, that promise budget turkey.
Right, but, but it's, if you can see the light at the end of the tunnel, if you know that by June, most people have been inoculated.
Yep.
You know, you may be able to.
I totally agree.
Set, you know, set up a meeting where people can participate, because, because this also talks about having a Zoom meeting.
Do you think it would be helpful for me to put that on our website? You know, the law that passed?
Yeah.
Only because I think there's a lot of information there. There's a lot that the, if they get a lot of either negative response from the public saying that they don't want this, I think it would be helpful for them to be listening to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
Correct. Because I don't Zoom.
You don't Zoom?
No, I could, but I choose not to.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people who can't even Zoom.
Correct.
So you're, you're leaving them out of the whole process.
Decision, yeah, decision, yeah.
I can, I totally agree with you.
You know, so, in this, and again, okay, I am elderly, I just don't do, because I choose not to, but there are a lot of people who, elderly people who can't Zoom, who don't know, don't even have a computer.
Yep.
And you're leaving them out of the process, you know? And I don't think that's right.
And that's the problem, you have no way of explaining your warrant articles if people aren't participating, and then they're going to vote, and the first thing they're thinking of is, my taxes were high enough last year, you know, I don't want this, I don't want that, and before you know it.
It could be, it could have fire.
They've asked something that if they had heard the argument, they would've said, yeah, you know, maybe it's a good idea to put that money aside, or whatever.
Yeah, so I think it would be helpful.
Yep, I have no, no issue with that. And it's a work in progress, and I think the tentative meeting just had the Zoom among the two boards, so we can discuss it, and moderator.
You know, I go once, I don't know, does the school negotiate this year, or is this the last year of the contract?
It's the last year, it's next year.
But I think they have to start.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they.
The discussion before.
So my concern is, because when they have, when their contract goes before the voter, if you have drive-by voting, and they're voting on a warrant article, and not many people attended, that it isn't a good argument for whether the teachers get a contract or not, because it has to be approved by the voters, the legislative body.
True.
You know, so.
So 21st is a tentative, okay, from us.
Okay.
All right, moving on. I have a, one of our, one of our former on-call employees came in with some information, she's trying to get reinstated. Please pass this on to the road agent for action. And, and I think you also, it's another, another agency in town for verification.
Yeah.
It's a work in progress, this is Bob, this is.
Yeah, I'm willing with this.
Okay. And I'm gonna open up for public comment again?
I'll wait till next week when Dave's here.
I just have a couple of quick things of war, of like, yeah, one, I had a discussion the other night with the road agent, and we were both in agreeance that before this container arrives, they probably should have them put, have the highway, or Jeff, or the, do some kind of pad down there to put that on. I'm not talking concrete, we were talking like stone or something.
Sure.
Some kind of pad, so.
And then alligator, a few inches up the ground, yeah?
Yeah, just some kind of pad to put it on.
Sure.
Jeff and I were discussing it while he was looking at a future project, and we were both in agreeance on it, so I'm just passing it on to you guys, so you can take it however you, you know, do what you choose.
In other words, do you know, we have a delivery date yet?
No, not yet, but this'll just remind me to give him a call.
Yeah, I guess, as a corollary to that, ground's gonna freeze, and if we get it, like, in December, we're screwed if we can't get a base established.
Right, you should get that.
So the thing is, I think we have enough, Bob, I think we have enough maintenance money, we could purchase enough gravel, gravel's not expensive, just to do a gravel pad.
Crushed stone.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it's not gravel.
Well, to the layperson, it is.
You got the wrong batch, then, when they dump it, you're stuck.
No, but, the thing is, I'm.
But, you know, and actually, Jeff's got a lot of crushed stone over in his yard. He doesn't have to go far to get it.
Okay.
We didn't talk about anything where it was coming from, or just that it was a good idea.
No, I'm just saying, he's got a mountain, he has stored a lot there.
Do you have a location, you, for sure you have a location?
We picked out a spot, it's gonna be where our box trailer is. If you're standing in the parking lot, Wood Park, it'd be to the right of the box trailer, so, and tucked in there, there's a nice little area right there where.
Okay, Lean, if you could contact the road ag, well, the thing is, I have consensus here, do you have consensus to make it happen?
Yeah, okay, do you wanna say something with Jeff?
I can reach out to him.
Yeah, I would say it should be in their hands, that.
Make it happen, okay. Again, before the ground freezes.
Right, I'll, I'll try and catch up with him tomorrow.
Yeah, you know, the snow this weekend, you know?
Yeah, it looks like rain.
No.
A couple, a couple of things, one, I'm talking about the stuff at the transfer, since the last time you guys have met, we met before Thanksgiving, we've had a few incidences down there, hiring residents, whatever, it's water on the damn, but I did have a conversation with the police chief about it, and the police department is doing patrols in and out while we're, while we're open.
Okay.
So, yeah, just their presence seems to.
Come, people.
Right, and if it continues to get worse, the chief and I talked a little bit more, you know, possibility of maybe even putting someone down there for a little while, but I don't think it's gonna come, that I think just their presence, you know, there seems to be enough.
Okay.
And then, the Thanksgiving week, we had, we have the, the new lights been installed in the parking lot.
Comes up?
Yes, and, but somebody has been in the facility while we were away on Thanksgiving holiday, so police department has a report, I talked to the chief again, I do have some cameras down there, they're not installed cameras.
Okay.
I have some kind, he's willing to work with me on it, I just kinda need the board's permission, I don't know the procedures, I don't know if there's rules about putting them up, but he kinda thought it was a good idea.
Put a security camera up.
That we should put some, you know, something up, because people are in there, I'm more concerned about someone getting hurt.
Right.
Even though you're not supposed to be there, you get hurt, the town's liable, kinda thing, so, I just pass it off to you, you can stew on it, nothing's gonna happen the next, you know, you can talk with all three of you, whatever, and.
You know, there's a variety of options out there, just putting security cameras up. As simple as a home system, like an ARLO system, you can put five to five cameras, have it recorded 24 by 7. They can, they can be, they run by batteries, but batteries, you don't have to activate the battery, you can activate it when you go home for the evening, for example, and have it run over the weekend. And if there's no activity, it doesn't really fire up. You can have the five cameras situated through the place, wireless, took to a router, hit to an internet, and it can actually alert, send a phone alert to whoever, the police department, or the, or the transfer station manager. Something, that's something considered, it's called ARLO.
What is it?
A-R-L-O.
ARLO, yeah.
And I think they're, they're relatively proven, and it's a stable element, and it costs nothing to upload the, as a, from a homeowner's standpoint, they can have the five cameras and record it for two weeks of activity.
Because they have internet there, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Like I said, I do have.
The only thing, it, you know, we're talking about a $300 expense, and what it does is, it would automatically call his phone, or the police phone, or anything that would activate.
Would be the police, and they would contact him.
Right, but the thing is, it'd be a phone message, or an email message, it'd be like an instant message to your phone, from a police officer.
But the police would be on duty, they could call him and say, we have someone here, blah, blah.
If you pursue that, get some details.
Okay.
It's not a lot of money, but it may be an ounce of prevention.
Yeah, like I said, you know, where they were, was in where we store the old tires.
Yeah.
And really, they're old tires, but my more concern is someone getting hurt.
I want a fire truck, a tire fire.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's kinda more my concern, and, you know, we do have value equipment laying, you know, not laying around, but parked down there, that really don't need people tampering.
No, the new truck is there, too, all, both trucks are there.
Everything's there, yeah.
So. Truck costs too much.
So I just wanted to bring that up to you.
Yes, if you would, talk to the chief about that, about cameras, but you take the word ARLO, and see what the chief feels about that.
Okay.
But the thing is, the resolution's pretty good, you can see license plates, you can see activity, and so, come up to my house and I'll put it on, I can show you.
Okay.
I'll make the invitations, you can see how it works.
Okay.
Wear a mask.
Wear a mask, yeah.
Can I make a comment on what you're talking about? You know, when you're having the issues with the public there, you know, is it possible that you, if you get recurring problems with people, the same people, or, or if they just, you can't call them down or something, can't get their plate number and tell them? You let the police know, and they can call them and say, knock it off?
That's actually what we've done.
Oh, good.
The staff's been instructed that, because there were some employees that got swore out by residents, and that sort of stuff, and I said, look, just get a plate number, if you don't know the name, just give me a plate number, we'll turn it over and let the PD take care of it, because you don't need to be treated like that.
No.
I know this, whatever, everybody's worked up over, I get it, we've all had enough of this.
Yeah, but he could ask for it, and somebody could.
Exactly, but we just kinda keep it on the.
You have the same security system as we have, and we have a panic button in every office.
We just have the, there's only one panel, and it's, only one building is armed, only one building has a security system.
But I don't know how far the panic button would have to be in order for it to activate 911 for emergencies, because you couldn't.
Yeah, we'd have to look at getting a panic button, ours only has the, I know you have remote ones, correct?
Yeah, they're.
Right, and we just have the button in the keypad that's, we don't have a.
But your system's the same as mine, so we could, they sell them, I think it was $150 when we bought them, for the system.
That's something to look at, too.
Yeah.
That would be, that's a no-brainer.
Right.
I'll find out what the range is, and if it would be worth having a panic button.
Maybe at the topper?